One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Madam Clerk, I see that we have a quorum. Do you concur?
I confirm the presence of a quorum.
Okay, and then we have minutes that were circulated from the previous meeting of August 4. Is there a motion to accept the minutes as written?
Uh, so move.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we also have an agenda this evening. Any questions about the agenda? Okay, I think we'll make one adjustment to the agenda, and that will be to do the swearing-in of the volunteer firefighters. And so, this is ordinance 2025-41, an ordinance confirming the appointment of Glendale volunteer firefighters, establishing a one-year probationary period, and declaring an emergency. We have sitting in for chief and assistant chief, our lieutenant Robbie Vischer. Robbie, can you tell us something about these candidates?
We've got five coming in. One's Josh Thompson. He's a firefighter EMT with Forest Park. Got a heart for working, helping people drive and make a difference. When he's not answering emergency calls, he's working towards becoming a paramedic, furthering his skills, better serving the community. And he's always ready to step up, so he's gonna be a good employee. And we've got Kayden Jones, who's also a firefighter EMT. He's a graduate of Butler Tech. He competed in the state and national fire competition when he was up at Butler Tech, placed first and third in the state, and seventh in the nationals. So he's a good, strong guy. His goal is to obtain a full-time job in the fire service and to be on the tech rescue team up in Butler County. And then we got Corey Jones, who's also a firefighter EMT with Forest Park Fire Department, graduated from Winton Woods, where he got his fire and his EMT certifications. He works at Forest Park, like I said, and Wright Care Medical Transport. In his free time during football season, he's all about those Oregon Ducks. We've got Chris Harrison. He's a firefighter with Loveland Sims, lives in Loveland Sims with his wife and three kids. He's employed by GE and is an active member of Loveland Sims Fire Department's Volunteer Emergency Services Unit. He enjoys spending time outdoors, camping, hiking, hang out with his dog named Jack. And we got Colton Piles. He's a firefighter with Milford Township. Been there for nine years. He's got a desire to pursue a lifelong dream of achieving a career in the full-time fire service.
Okay. Thank you for that introduction. Is there a motion for this ordinance?
So move.
Second.
And a motion to dispense with three reads.
So move.
Second.
Okay, Madam Clerk, would you please call the rule?
For ordinance 2025-41, to dispense with the three reads, Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Basemuth.
Aye.
Mr. Kreidler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldridge.
Aye.
Ms. Fleury.
Aye.
Ms. Verchelle.
Aye.
For ordinance 2025-41, Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Basemuth.
Aye.
Mr. Kreidler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldridge.
Aye.
Ms. Fleury.
Aye.
Ms. Verchelle.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, so motion passes. What we'll do now is we will swear in our candidates. So if you'd all step up into this middle section, and we'll swear as you all in at long time.
It's history, isn't it?
Okay. All right, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
Aye, Josh Thompson.
Do hereby swear.
Do hereby swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of volunteer firemen for the Village of Glendale.
The duties of volunteer firemen for the Village of Glendale.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Congratulations and thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Welcome.
Congratulations.
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 Welcome.
Congratulations, welcome aboard.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Somebody's too.
Thanks again. Okay. So five, five new volunteers. That's very good news. All right, going back to the rest of our agenda. Wait till they get clear. Okay, going back to the rest of our agenda, now we'll move on to public comment. Looks like we have a couple of people that ask in advance to speak. The first is Jeff Herbert. Is Jeff here? Jeff? Wants to speak about America 250. Please come to the podium and announce your name and address for the record.
My name is Jeff Herbert, and I live in Glendale at 26 Brandywine Drive.
Hang on, I've got your presentation. Hang on a second.
Okay. And I really know how to clear out a room, don't I? As soon as you announced my name, everybody got up and left. So I was told you have a copy of the presentation in front of you? Okay. So what I'm here to talk about is America 250, and as you hopefully are aware, next year is our semi-quintennial celebration, our America 250, which is probably simpler because nobody knows what semi-quintennial, the Latin is anymore. And so at the federal level, we have a mission statement. Rosie Rios is the chairman, and her mission statement is America's 250th anniversary is more than reflecting on our past. It's about honoring the contributions of individuals who built this country, the innovations that put this country on the map, and a man on the moon, and imagining what the next 250 years might look like for our children and the generations to come. And so from there, the state of Ohio came up with a commission, and on the next page, page number two, you can see the framework that they've put together month by month for next year on some themes and suggestions on how to celebrate. One of the things that we're working on right now is in January, it's Ohio First and Originals. So if you collectively have Glendale Firsts and Originals that you want to highlight, please feel free to send them to me, and I will include them with the Hamilton County list. From there, the Hamilton County Commissioners appointed a committee specific to Hamilton County, and it's led by Pavin Partik, the clerk of courts from the Hamilton County courthouse, and Elizabeth Pierce, the CEO of the museum center. And they both chartered a team of 20 volunteer individuals, and I am one of them, from the community to help them with the Hamilton County celebration. So I'm here tonight to get the word out to you that we have a committee. We're here to help you, and also is if you have events that you would like to sponsor and you want to publicize, I'm here to help get the word out across the county that you're, you're holding something. The other thing is that we're doing between now and the end of the year is we're getting the word out to every city, village, township, municipality, and Hamilton County that the commission exists. And we're also asking, not for any money, but your participation to become an official America 250 community. So if you do decide that, you're free to use the logo to advertise that you're an official America 250 committee. We're here to help you. The state of Ohio has grants. If you've got a big project that you want to highlight, something historical in nature with Glendale. And if you decide to become a America 250 village or community, on page three underneath, yeah, everyone's there, underneath the logo and the flag, there is a website and a workflow that somebody from the village would have to go to and register Glendale as an official community. And then in the packet, I think it's the Word document, if you have it at the end, I put together a, an amended template with Glendale and all the other appropriate information that you would just have to adopt the resolution to become an official America 250 committee. Just put the date, and then I think there's three or four witnesses that attest that the resolution has been adopted. And then on the next page, it's basically a simple six-step process to go to the website, register, scan the signed and approved resolution, upload it to the website, and then usually within 25 to 30 days, you get a notice from the state that you have been accepted as a official America 250 community. So it does give you the benefit of, you know, next year you can use the logo for any kind of communications, your weekly newsletter. The thought is to take what you're already doing as a community with, you know, the Saturday, June, July concerts, with the street fair next weekend, you know, rebrand it as a America 250 celebration, that you're not doing anything new, but you're kind of wrapping it around, have some, you know, patriotic music near the Fourth of July, things like that, that you can kind of incorporate and, and celebrate and rebrand it as part of the semi-quintennial. So that's my presentation. Any questions?
I have one.
Sure.
This is the obvious one. Have you made a connection with Glendale Heritage Preservation?
Yes. I was there two weeks ago, talked to Elizabeth. I gave her Slide Two, which is the monthly template. She's already thinking about displays and themes for next year as she incorporates it. I also did stop at the library last Saturday and talk to the two librarians. I gave them the same thing, the same pitch that you've got here with Slide Two, with all the month-by-month breakdowns. So they're busy thinking about how they can put displays together and so forth. So we're well ahead of the curve here.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions?
And then I guess if you do decide to adopt it, if somebody could just send me a quick email, and then I'll communicate back to the Hamilton County chairs that you're on board.
And David, you have his, okay.
Yep. All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Bill Parish is asked to speak about Eckstein Cultural Arts Center. And then just the formality, Bill, name and the residence.
Good evening. I'm Bill Parish. I'm the executive director of the Eckstein Cultural Arts Center, formerly of 220 East Sharon, now of 42 Washington Avenue, Eckstein School. I'm here today to make a presentation about the Underground Railroad walking tour. Three years ago, we were on this journey that ended in 2022, where we had landed on the walking tour. We had plans for it. We'd done all the process of what we needed to, for the, the tour to become reality. We went through council, and we got approval to do it, and then we started on this journey with the Eckstein School. So we kind of pushed pause on it for a second, but in the meantime, what we did was we thought it'd be good to do some surveys and take some kids on some tours and some schools on tour, some adults, senior citizens over that time, and we thought that that would be a good way to get some feedback. Our, our aim was to make it very simple for people to access, to go through, the walking tour to be very easy to do, whether you're in your car or whether you're walking. So we have our, our... So between June 23 and June 2024, we provided 21 tours as a test market for the tours. Among those tours were kids from the neighborhood schools, Princeton High School, Sycamore, and Winton Woods kids, and they came, and so they gave us really tough feedback for what we needed to do differently. So in the process, we made those changes. In June 19, 2024, we started partnership with Woodlawn Juneteenth Celebration and Landmark Church, and we provided six tours of 40 people between 1:00 and 6:00 PM during their celebration last year. So after we came out of that celebration, we felt very strongly that we had something that was very tangible. And so this year, we partnered with Woodlawn Wyoming, and then Wyoming decided to provide us with two Juneteenth Celebration booths to promote our tours and for teens to create some Underground Railroad themed art. So it was really, really a success that we had of presenting that, but then it also meant that we were now partnered with Woodlawn, our neighboring community, and Wyoming, a neighboring community. Wyoming has formally given us, we've made an agreement. So over the last two months, we've been discussing and meeting with them, and now we have a formal agreement to next year, we're going to be a part of the Wyoming celebration. They're going to do tours as well. In 2025, our partnership with Landmark Church, they decided that we would try to begin to include other communities, surrounding communities such as Sharonville, Evendale. And as a result, we wanted to do the tours, and we also wanted to do a program. So we had called the program Songs on the Road to Freedom. It was a musical program. And it began with a testimony by Megan Johnson, who is a four-time great-granddaughter of John Van Zant. So if you know the story of the Underground Railroad and Landmark Church and that property there, which used to be Mount Pierpont, and in 1842, John Van Zant was put in prison for moving enslaved people through that property, and then in 1847, he died in jail. Megan's a four-time great-great-great-granddaughter, so, so Megan and Mariana Matthews-Pipon, who many of us know the Matthews family in Glendale, she's also the four-time great-great-granddaughter of Stanley Matthews, who was not only noted in the Village of Glendale, but he was the assistant to Salmon Chase in the case of, of John Van Zant. So they're, they're leading the tours through the home that's up there, where Matt Holman, who's the pastor there, they have tunnels under the house, so they are there to tell the stories during the tours. So this year, we had a number of people come to support those tours, and it, it was amazing how well it went. I have pictures from the presentation that I had, that I wanted to share to just kind of give you an idea of what it looked like. So what we wanted to do today was to introduce what we call a Freedom Journey. This in September, in a few weeks, on Sunday, September 22nd, we'll be at the Underground Railroad Freedom Center, which they partnered with us to the point where now we're ready, they're ready to launch our Underground Railroad tour. Part of that partnership also included other, other tours throughout the area, mainly Springboro, which was the next stop on the Underground Railroad. So they'll be there. So on that Sunday, it's a free day for the, for communities to come sponsored by Fifth Third Bank. So in all of that, this year was such a big deal that we decided in 2026 that our partnerships, there are many, I have them here listed. I won't read all of them, but now we have connected with Sharonville, Evendale, Lincoln Heights, all the surrounding communities. We have sponsors now to help us to make this a really big event. We have the commitment from Landmark Church to our original, where the tour is going to start. It'll start at Landmark Church, and we're now in the process of putting together the overall mapping of that. So it will start there, and it'll come through the Village of Glendale. If my presentation, I can't really show through the presentation, but...
Mr. Parish, we are up against and beyond the five minutes, but we'll let you kind of wrap here if you, if you're able.
Okay, so to wrap it up, we have a web-based application that we're using through, through this, and the locations, we have 17 locations in the village, 15 of which will be a part of the walking tour, riding tour. We have two vans that we're going to use, and the application is going to be able to be used in your phone. So you can download the app. It's called Freedom Journey. You can download it, and then you can take the tour on your own, sometimes even without that. So tonight, I just wanted to invite the council and the, and the village to join this journey because we're starting already for next year, meeting with Landmark, and Wyoming's already in. So we have this community, this community committee that we already have to figure out how we can leverage each community to do this thing in 2026. So I want, I felt it was important to come and let the village know that if you'd like to be a part of it, we'd, we'd love to have you to be a part of it, and because next year, we'll, we'll be doing it big. So, so thanks for giving me the time, Mike, and I appreciate being able to... I'm sorry.
Yeah, I said, and Mike, and council.
And council, yeah. Yeah, well, we, you know, thanks for the approval. I mean, we had the approval three years ago. We just updated the last two years to bring it to the point where it is today. And now we're ready to launch it now, and that's really what I wanted to let the council know, that we're about to launch this. After two years of experiments and getting feedback, we now gonna launch it in, in June, Juneteenth Celebration this, in 2026.
And your group will be having tours through the Glendale neighborhood?
Yes, so we're just trying to prepare everybody for, for that, once the tours start, and making sure that we, that far enough ahead of time, kind of say, hey, it's coming, so we can prepare for what's coming. So thanks, thanks for the extra time. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Parish. And is there anyone else that wishes to address council?
Good evening. Golly, parishus, parishus, parishus. My name is Glenn Parish. I just recently purchased the property at 100 Washington Avenue and have been working on it feverishly to make it fit into the neighborhood. I believe if you go up and down Washington Avenue, you will see that it is a shining example of the history of this village which I grew up in, and I am a third-generation Glendalean. When I purchased the property, I visited with the CIC, and I, because we were trying to see what was going to happen since the village owns the neighboring property. There was a, there is a dispute about the property lines. I, I believe I asked the administrator for a copy of the survey, of which he said that you do have, but then subsequently, we find that, no, you did not. It is, my, my plans for my property was to put a couple of buildings on it for myself and my, my daughter. I was told during that meeting that I couldn't do that. But then, when I reiterated what the, the law was, the administrator also said that, yes, he is, it is true that I can do that. Now, another question was raised in that same meeting about what the plans for 94 Washington Avenue, city, village property, what they were gonna do with it. Unfortunately, they were gonna do even more. But I believe that the acquisition of 100 was hopefully being able to be purchased by the village, so that the development of that property would at least give the village enough space to develop it the way that they wanted to. Now, I offered, because my company, Interface Group Contractors LLC, I offered to develop both properties, but the offer I made to the village was because there's no income coming off of that property, that you just give the property to me. Of course, that went over like a lead balloon. Now, you have to understand that because I now know what the property lines are, there is now a dispute as to the actual property that has been maintained by 100 Washington Avenue for over 21 years, which leads us to adverse occupation. And my council told me that I need to go to the auditor's office in order to actually do that. I still have not, excuse me?
Give her about a minute.
Okay, if I can be allowed to complete this, because council needs to know what is going on here, and if I'm not able to complete it, then you will have a, you will have kind of like an incomplete idea of what the situation is. And I do understand, thank you very much. Before his untimely death, I was able to speak to the, to Tom. And Tom, visually, he, I asked him what the property lines were, and he informed me that there were more than a few village-owned properties that did not have surveys. Mine, the one at 94, being one of them.
Could you please wrap in about the next 30 seconds?
No, I cannot, because this is important for council to know that over the years, ever since the property was acquired because of non-payment of, of taxes, no one has ever decided that, find out what the property lines are. And that property is not the only one. So now I do know...
Mr. Parish, I think we're into an area where you're best to start these questions with the village administrator and not council.
I have.
All right.
But I'm not, I wrote a letter, an email, which you were CC'd on, requesting that survey. And then I received another email that said, that said, you don't have to provide me with that, which we now know is public property.
Okay, well, let's, let's do this. We're, we're past time. There are some basic statements you made that I think are incorrect, and I, and I will address those because they are very important statements. And again, I think at this point in time, the best course of action for you is to work through the administrator. If you have questions about your property or property lines, or if you have questions about whether there's an adverse possession issue, all of these things would start with the administrator.
You did.
Who would work in conjunction with our legal counsel if he determined our legal counsel needed to get involved. So I think the time is done. It's a five-minute allocation. We've already gone over that. At this point, I would like to make a few comments that I think will kind of... At this point, I would like to make a few comments that I think will kind of clear some of these issues. Is there anyone else that wishes to address council, though? One more. All right. Mr. Parrish, would you please step to the podium?
I'm sorry, but I would like, if council would at least indicate whether or not this is.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna step in here for a second. Just a reminder for council and the public, this is a five-minute public comment limit. We don't do back and forth or question or answer. This is just an option in the ability for the public to bring their comment. Everyone is limited to five minutes. So if we could just keep council moving tonight, I think that would be the best path forward. Thanks.
Okay, I appreciate that. So.
I appreciate, I appreciate the time. If anyone wants to speak to me.
You need to step away from the podium. You're disrupting a public meeting at this point. I'm gonna ask you to step away from the podium, or I'll have to escort you out.
I understand.
So you can step away now.
My name is Kevin Parrish. Another Parrish. This is historic. September the eighth, 2025, council meeting. On the, always the fifth, fourth meeting of last month, I asked questions to the council as to clarification of the designation of Kevin Bell as a Village of Glendale employee. I also requested that you get clarification from the solicitor so that you would have knowledge of what his position is. I would ask that you give an answer as to your findings of Kevin's position as utilities, chief utilities operator. Also, I brought, I raised a question of the lies. You didn't address that issue, but the lies that you constantly tell to the public. This here is pictures of the Phase One sanitary sewer project that for years now, I've brought to council in saying that you guys didn't do the work that you say you did. Cole Avenue was earmarked for replacement. As you can see, and these are pictures from December, the week of December of 2017, of a contractor, which was Instriform, doing the work. That doesn't look like pipe replacement, but it looks like an attempt to sleeve a pipe. That's a hundred percent blocked, pipes bursting and cracked. These are pictures of that. So this is documentation of that the work of pipe replacement just didn't occur, but you guys say you did. So today, I'd like to make a verbal affidavit statement to this council as to, my name is Kevin Parrish and the statements I'm getting ready to give to this council are true and accurate as to photographic documentation that the Village of Glendale engaged in a conspiracy with the Instriform Company, which performed the work on Phase One sanitary sewer project to defraud not only the Village of Glendale, but also present documents to the Ohio EPA DEFa Commission in saying that this work was done, that 286-foot of pipe was put on that street, and other documents that were just totally untrue. I say these statements on the record to be documented at this council meeting for further investigation of these allegations that I made. So for the record, Glendale did conspire with this Instriform Company. Photographic documentation, and this is just a few of the pictures I have from the project that was being performed, 2017, from start to finish, including trucks, DOT numbers and personnel, and the events that happened. After they closed this street up, they had pipe left over. But the start of the project said that it was 286 feet. So if you got a hundred foot laying down on the side of the park afterwards, it could not have been that. But you've got documentation that the Ohio EPA DEFa Division approves that. The documentation that was submitted as to project completion is just fraudulent. So I present that to this council and to the public. Also, to residents of this community, do not be deceived about the charter proposal that is getting ready to take place in this community.
Give about a minute.
If you, if we've got a council like this that's not trustworthy, telling lies, they're not supportive of the residents here, that is not a strong council. We should just consider our choices and candidates when vote comes back up again. Also, this weekend, I noticed that they had a big soccer game at Saunders Park. You continue to lie about Summit Park. You don't even use the park. You don't grade the field and you don't put lines down, but you say there's no mosquitoes. Ask the parents that take their kids to Saunders while they're playing there, where they have to walk almost half a mile to get to the park. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. So anyone else here wishing to address council? Can't tell. No? Okay, seeing no one, we'll move on with the rest of the meeting. So moving on to the reports, in the mayor's report, I will start with correcting some previous statements that were made. Addressing council by the public is something that everyone is allowed to do, but if there are really truly misstatements, then those need to be corrected, I believe. Mr. Parrish spoke about a property at 100 Washington and there's dispute about the property lines. In his mind, there may be disputes. I don't know if there are disputes. There was not a survey. There was never any statement that there had been a survey. We do not have a survey made. We're not in possession of a survey. The request was made for a survey. That request was answered in a professional manner. Then told during a meeting of the CIC that could not develop the property in a way that he wished to develop the property, but the administrator said that it could be developed in that way, is another incorrect statement. The fact of the matter is that it was, his desire to develop the property was discussed. Adding additional houses on the property, the fact of the matter, according to the zoning code, is required a sixty-five-foot lot width, I believe. Is that correct, Mr. Lumpston?
Sixty-five or fifty, but.
Or fifty? That particular lot is in the range of sixty, sixty-five feet wide. One residence can be on that property, and that was shared with Mr. Parrish. I don't believe anybody's individual opinion came up in that. It was just a statement of what is possible on that property. What going to do with the property? The village owns that property. For now, they plan to hold the property at 94 Washington. We cannot give the property to any individual. And I believe it was explained that the disposition of any property owned by the village needs to go to public bid. And we're not interested in disposing of the property at the time. I'm not aware of any dispute related to the property. Again, that was brought up. If there is a dispute regarding the property, or if you wish to get a survey because you feel there is a dispute, that is something that you can do, or any property owner can do. We addressed the Kevin Bell question. I do not think that people here in council are telling lies. I don't believe our administrator is telling lies. We have records that indicate that those pipes were replaced. We have a test that indicates the pipes were replaced, that test by a separate company than the company that did the work. And if anybody's interested in those records, those records have been provided to Mr. Parrish. I don't know what sort of photographs those are during the repairs that were taking place. Obviously, would show pipes that were in disrepair and pipes being replaced. So, and then regarding problems at Summit that we don't use Summit Park. Summit Park is used. I believe last Wednesday, there were two fields, possibly three in use, and there must have been a hundred people out there. I had twenty kids for instructional soccer that I and four other parents were coaching at that park. So I'm not sure what we're doing. The use of Saunders Park is because, and Summit Park more than what it was used last year. Now there's an additional field there. We're trying to rest the Washington Park field because it got overused last year. And that was at the request of the GYS people. So things are all well in the village as far as their parks go. Are there mosquitoes at the park? Yes. They're everywhere. There are mosquitoes right outside this building. Okay. Regarding the rest of the mayor's report, I'm sorry for that segue, but we can't have unfounded statements being made without correction. We can, we can have unfounded statements being made. I'm going to say something that corrects those statements. There were no births to report. There were no deaths reported. The Glendale Street Fair will take place Saturday, September thirteenth, from noon to nine on the village square, presented by Harry Whiting Brown Community Center. A lot of work's gone into that. It should be a great event, as it always is. GYS instructional started. I made the comment before. We have kids in that program, ages three to five. There were twenty registered kids. I think we had twenty, twenty-one, actually, that showed up with a late registration. So we've got a very good program there. The other soccer programs have already started. There's quite a few kids participating in GYS this year. So that's good. A lot of young families moving in. Glendale Community Library hosted its Glendale Community Library Fair on August sixteenth. It was very well-attended. I think everyone had a good time. It was very successful. And then this past Saturday, one of our village business owners, Kyle Eberlein, put on, or performed with a full band, a benefit concert, the proceeds for which went to a village Christmas. It was extremely well-attended. A few hundred people there. It was probably the biggest concert I've ever seen on Harry Whiting Brown grounds. And again, those donations received there, the food was donated by Ham and Meats. And the donations received there will go to the Village Christmas, which is organized by Sherry Conley, with, also organized also by Harry Whiting Brown. It was a great evening, and I'd really just like to put out, it took a lot of time and energy to put this whole thing together. And it was all volunteer. So a big thank you to all those people involved. That is, oh, a comment about brush collection. That was the hot topic this past month. Council will be working on, what is our best approach to brush collection coming up during our budgeting season? It could require different equipment. We might look at outsourcing this service or the possibility of bringing about some controls as to when brush can and can't be put out. Our issue we had was the brush chipper went down. We had it repaired in a pretty reasonable amount of time, about a week, and it failed again due to a faulty part, due to a faulty part. So we had to go through the whole repair process again. Unfortunately, things got away from us. I'll apologize for myself and on behalf of the entire administration. We wish we could have done better, but when you don't have the equipment, it's awful hard to get that done. That was an unusual event, which is why we'll be doing some special planning for how can we make sure that that situation never happens again. If there are stray piles still out, please be patient with us. I think we're just about caught up at this point to where it's, it's not things that have been sitting there for over a week. That's it for mayor's report. Now, David, if you would provide the village administrator report?
Thank you, mayor. Wanted to touch on a couple of, a couple of things related to street repaving projects. We were notified late Friday that the repaving of Albion Avenue is on hold. There are circumstances that are outside of the village's control and outside of the contractor's control that are putting a brief pause on the final course of pavement on that street. The current intermediate course is drivable. It's quite nice, actually. I drove it myself Friday afternoon and is a preview of things to come when they do finally get the final course on the street. We do not have an anticipated timeline right now. Hopefully, we'll have that information in the next couple of days. And we'll, of course, notify residents as soon as that's available. But I still anticipate that that final course of paving will only take about one day to be applied. So work will be wrapped up as quickly as possible. As we discussed at the Streets Committee meeting, the Metro Board of Trustees met in late August and recommended approval of our two applications totaling about 1.18 million in transit infrastructure grant funding for the repaving of Fountain and Ivy Avenues in 2026. Now, that does have some future steps to go. It needs to go to the, there's a county board that will approve the applications in the third quarter of this year, in the next couple of weeks. They don't have a meeting date set, but as soon as I have confirmation on that, I'll circulate it. Have every reason to believe that we will receive that funding and that that will be available on the first day of 2026 for us to get started on the repaving projects there. And then finally, the 4.5 mil road levy that was voted on at the last council meeting has been submitted to the Board of Elections and is confirmed for the November ballot. We're looking forward to a town hall later this month and then a digital, probably Zoom town hall, either this month as well or in October. But we'll finalize those dates and publicize them far and wide for those who want to attend. If there are any other questions, otherwise that is my report. Yes.
Since we have a pause on the work on Albion, will the contractor be working with, working on the fire hydrants in that period of time?
It's a different contractor.
Ah, okay, so where are we on fire hydrants?
We're, yeah, we're still, we're still, I'm still finalizing a schedule on hydrants. Should have that here, I would imagine, the next week or two, waiting on fire department to finalize some priority for replacement. But anticipate that that work will begin very, very soon.
Before the end of the month?
Very likely, yes. Thank you.
Anything else? No? Okay. So committee reports, Madam Clark, can you call those?
Finance committee, please.
Excuse me, finance did not meet last month.
Will you be meeting soon?
Good question. I'm sure.
You want to circulate if you.
There will be a town hall coming up, so.
Okay, thank you. Fire committee, please.
Fire also did not meet during the month of August, but highly likely that we will during September. And Chief Yetter and Assistant Chief Lierman are down south looking at the last little tweaky things on the new fire engine, so they couldn't be here. Neither one could be here tonight. So it's all going through the final check. We're getting really close. And so with their absence, I turn this over to Division Chief, Rob Fisher.
Thank you. They're, yeah, they're down in Florida checking on that, that new truck. So the entire department's excited to get that.
They're actually driving it.
We're, I think we're having it shipped up here. I'm not a hundred percent sure.
They have, they're driving it.
Yeah. I believe those two are out test-driving it and having fun that way. But I'm not a hundred percent sure on that. So I believe it should be up here rather soon, in the next month or two. So that's gonna, gonna be pretty exciting. Other than that.
Very good.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Laws and claims, please.
The laws and claims committee, I guess in the form of the committee as a whole will be meeting this Thursday to discuss charter, possibility of charter, establishment of charter government. I believe it's here, a town hall, not at the village offices. And it's more of an organizational meeting than, you know, we're not, we won't be discussing merits or anything. And it's more of an organizational meeting than, you know, we're not, we won't be discussing merits or anything like that, just an organizational meeting. And I think also David put together some issues, I should say raising awareness about the issues in the notice. So, so that's this Thursday. Laws and Claims Committee will be meeting on September 17th. The agenda will be code enforcement evaluation, our code, our third-party code enforcement company and progress made there. We'll also possibly be talking about some changes in zoning ordinance, and probably a couple of things. In my role as the liaison from Glendale Legacy Foundation, just a quick report to say that we will be meeting tomorrow night, quarterly meeting to discuss progress there as well. And I don't have a specific update on what's been collected so far, but we'll be talking about several issues, including the approval of our nonprofit status, which is still ongoing despite Chris Monzel's calls to our Senator Husstead and our Rep. Warren Davidson's office to see if they can't move this along more quickly. They just apparently have advised him that everything's backed up.
Everything's good.
Yeah, that's unfortunate, but we continue to work on it, so that's my report.
Did you say meeting on September 17th?
At 4:00 PM.
At 4:00, got it, thank you.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation, please.
Parks and Recreation met this past Thursday, the 4th. The rough draft of those minutes will be out in the next couple of days. We covered a lot, a lot of it's already been mentioned tonight. That was the brush collection, the chipper, we discussed a little bit about Lake Park Playground, which is wooden and probably doesn't have so much life left, and ideas about what to do with that in the next few years. Soccer fields, again, Washington's getting arrests, so all the soccer's happening at Summit Park and Saunders right now. We reviewed the results of the Triangle Trail feasibility study, which has now come out and been circulated to all of the communities in the area. It's a pretty expansive project. We'll be hearing that, about that from David in a little bit, but the committee did move to pass or forward a resolution on to us tonight, all of council, to essentially say, you know, in good faith, we choose to be part of this in the future. It's a very long-range project, so nothing's happening right now with it, but communities are starting to get going on that with their segments as they're able and as funding becomes available. So, that was most of what was covered.
Thank you. Police Committee, please.
Police did not meet, and Lieutenant Barber is here. In August, we had back to school, all the schools started, and we were able to donate over 25 backpacks and school supplies to Glendale Elementary. That was all through donations from village residents to the Glendale Police Association. We were, we completed lockdown training and safety training with all the school staffs at each school early in the month. If you look on the monthly report, we have a large amount of theft. That was a vehicle theft in Brandywine area. There was a contractor that was working on a vehicle, working on a home there and had his vehicle stolen while he was working. That happened around the first of the month, and we recovered that vehicle last night in a community to the west. We haven't made an arrest yet, however, we are continuing the investigation. Supposedly, he had purchased it from someone else over off of Facebook, but we're continuing leads on that. We were able to find that vehicle through use of the flock system. I could share further on that later, if you guys, anyone else is interested. We did have a $30,000 fraud scam by telephone where a gentleman had called a resident and said that they believed their bank employee was involved in some fraud and stealing money from customers. So, they were going to deposit $40,000 into his bank account, and then he needed to go withdraw it. So, he did. He did it at three different banks for $30,000. They directed him to deposit the money into a Bitcoin machine, which he did. And then he went and found out that the $40,000 deposit had been stopped. So, he was out $30,000. We've turned that over to BCI, the Ohio Bureau of Criminal Investigation. They have a, a unit that works strictly on Bitcoin, and they're continuing their investigation on that. That's about it.
Lieutenant, was the truck still in pretty good shape, do you know?
They tore the GPS unit out of it. The insurance had already paid on it, so the victim went today to look at it and see if he would rather have the truck or the money they gave him, which ended up being a lot more than $30,000. And he is not happy with the condition of the truck, so I'd say it did some damage to it. Thanks.
It's too bad. Okay.
Thank you. Public Buildings and Historic Preservation, please.
We did not meet.
Thank you. Streets, Public Improvements and Lights.
We also met this past Thursday, the 4th, and those committees, or I'm sorry, those minutes will be circulated in the next few days. Some of the topics discussed, gaslight maintenance, we, the village had ordered five new gaslights. Those, I think, have come in, they have not been installed yet. We're looking at a system to be able to clean them on a more regular routine basis and keep those up. David updated us on the new structure of the, within the utility and maintenance departments, and sort of how that's going to flow moving forward. He mentioned the new match that came in, or I'm sorry, the new.
Grant?
Grant. Yeah, so that was great news. Also, we updated the Streets Committee on the Triangle Trail feasibility study and where we sit with that, even though the Parks Committee has put in the motion to move it to council. Some residents came expressing concern, ongoing concern, as we've been hearing about speeding in the village and speed limits. There was a request to think about reducing the speed limit from 35 to 25 on our main thoroughfares, Congress and Sharon. So, we are, had requested of David to look into what to do going forward. Understanding is that ODOT won't even consider something like that without a speed zone study being performed ahead of time. So, hopefully, we'll get some more information on that. We talked about some parking on Church Street that had become problematic, that a resident had brought to our attention. And we decided to go ahead and designate part of Church Street as a no parking zone in order to improve safety and visibility there. So, I think there will be some signs going up part of that street to make that effective. Thank you.
Thank you. Utilities, please.
Utilities did not meet, so we will be doing so before September is out, and I will contact the other committee members online.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the Treasurers Report, Mr. Bill Grant.
So, I sent a copy to everyone here. And you, Greg. And you, Robbie. Sorry. So, I mean, we're, we're on track. I talked to the mayor, I think we'll, you know, we might hit about 350,000 this year. Market is, as most people see, is kind of in a flux right now. Our money market dropped six basics points, so that's, that's not good. And if the Fed dropped their rates, then our money market account, which we have quite a bit in there right now waiting for the, the payment of the fire truck, is likely to go down again. So, once we pay the fire truck, we'll probably lose probably about $8,000, but I think we'll still hit our 350,000 for the year. But for next year, just want to point out that we'll have probably about a million dollar or less to invest. So, that'll probably be a drop at, current rates are about $38,000, so minimum of that, it's likely to be more than that, so.
Good, fair warning.
Anyways. That's it.
Okay. Is there a report from our clerk, fiscal?
Yes, I have two things. First, Denise and I will be attending fiscal officer training in October, the 16th, I believe. Always a fun time. So, that's a full-day event and required to pass our audit. And the next thing I have is displayed on the screen, but it's kind of tiny. It was also part of the packet that David sent out. This is the monthly bank reconciliation that I go through. And with the change in the fiscal officer status and getting council more involved in this, Denise spent a lot of time with David to outline and create a reference guide for this. I've been doing it for a few years, so I, you know, I looked at it to make sure it made sense. But, so, this is 41 pages of the July Bank Statements and Reconciliations. And the first part you're going to see here is the legend. So, every item that you need to look at that ties back to something else has got a number or a number letter combination. And this is the, the translation for it, I guess, in basic English. And then as you go through this, you can see all of these things have got reference numbers, page numbers. So, this is the overview of what it looks like. So, if you want to look at the total entered bank balances at 11.2 million dollars, it consists of 1A, 1B, and 1C, which you go back up to the top and you look at, oh, this is 1A, 1B, and 1C. So, it's primary checking, mayor's court, and then the investment account. So, you can see that's the amount of, of bank balances we have, and it's the number that needs to tie to the number that's further down here. So, this is every month. So, and as part of the new process of getting council more involved with the new fiscal officer structure, it is very important that you guys understand this. So, we have tried to make it as easy as possible. Sorry that it's 41 pages, but we write a lot of checks. We have a lot of things going on, and so it makes for an extensive document. But all of these things, you've got the high-level stuff, and once you're comfortable with the details, you may not have to go through the details every month unless you have a question. Okay, but the first few times around, you're going to want to look at this in detail so you can make sure that you understand what's going on. And then, once you get a handle for what looks like normal numbers, you can kind of look at it a little less in-depth. But I hope you guys like numbers. Welcome.
Hope you'll be answering your phone.
Yeah, do not try and do this on your phone, it's very tiny, very tiny.
I did not try to print it either.
Yeah, and I wouldn't print it, it's a lot of paper, but.
Becky, this is what you currently review as the fiscal officer every month?
Yes.
Yes, you review this currently, okay.
I used to, when, before Denise came on, I was attempting to help actually do the balancing and reconciliation.
Mm-hmm, right, right.
Which was a different level of teaching.
Yes, it was. I recall that time.
Yeah.
We appreciate all your efforts.
No worries.
Could we post all this stuff on our website? Because our last financial report was April, so just to kind of catch up so that.
We'll get those updated.
So, you get a chance to, I'm speaking to our future council members over here, an opportunity to go through all their finances, so.
There we go.
Very good.
That's my report.
Thank you, Becky. Making emails here, so bear with me. All right. Next, we'll switch to new business. Under new business, we have already appointed the firefighters, the new firefighters. So, next ordinance is Ordinance 2025-42, an ordinance accepting responsibility for the operation of the annual Village of Glendale Car Show, authorizing amendment of the 2025 appropriations of the Car Show Fund, and declaring an emergency. Just the briefest of background is previously, the Car Show Committee partnered with Harry Whiting Brown. It, things worked out well, but we found that there were some differences in what could be done with the proceeds from the Car Show. And so, we decided that it would be better for the Car Show Committee to just take the Car Show back. Worked out well, I think everyone, you know, parted ways. Again, I wish we could have continued the arrangement, but there were some fundamental differences between the expectations of the Car Show Committee and what Harry Whiting Brown is actually allowed to do in passing donations from them to other agencies in the community, such as the Police Fund. So, we're, we're back to the way it was before, and the committee will carry on through our process. This year found some younger people that want to get involved in the Car Show, so they're going to be able to keep it going. Okay, so that's, that's too much information. Any questions about this?
So, it's just returning the funds?
Returning the funds.
Okay, got it.
And the limited proceeds that were generated this year are also returning to the Car Show Fund, the Car Show account, which still exists within the village.
So, a quick question. So, the responsibility is going back to the village, and the reason is that there was not clarity in how the funds would be distributed?
Yes, I think there were assumptions made that the funds can be distributed in the same way that they were before, but apparently, Harry Whiting Brown's charter does not allow them to do that.
All right, thanks.
So, we're going backwards.
Okay.
And by doing so, then the village can actually write a check to the five organizations that we will be receiving funds from.
Yes.
The Fire Department, Police, GYS, Boy Scout, and Harry Whiting Brown.
The Library. So, we can write those same five checks, as we always have, splitting the proceeds.
Those organizations can use that money in whatever way they deem it's necessary to support their.
I'd say in the past, the check went to HWB in general, because I was the one picking it up.
Okay, all right, got it. So, that's the way we'll do it this time. So, is there a motion for this ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
And a motion to dispense with three reads. So moved.
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
For Ordinance 2025-42, to dispense with the three reads, Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Baseman.
Aye.
Mr. Cradler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldridge.
Aye.
Ms. Flurry.
Aye.
Ms. Verchow.
Aye.
For Ordinance 2025-42, Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Baseman.
Aye.
Mr. Cradler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldridge.
Aye.
Ms. Flurry.
Aye.
Ms. Verchow.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, so that ordinance passes. Next is Ordinance 2025-43, an ordinance amending the Village of Glendale Code of Ordinances, Chapters 94 and 154, regarding the harboring of chickens and declaring an emergency. David, I'll let you tackle this one, or Joan, whoever prefers.
We're here. We finally have what is the final draft of the ordinance language regarding the harboring of chickens in the village. Beginning with laws and claims work, prior to their recommendation through Planning Commission, through council, we have two pieces to this ordinance, Chapter 94 and Chapter 154. The Chapter 154 language, which is the second half of the Amendment, Section 2, were, those were reviewed by Planning Commission and then recommended to council for approval. The Chapter 94 language is, it's not new to the process. It was reviewed and discussed by the Laws and Claims Committee. However, it is new at this stage because it is coming in for approval by council. It does not require, because it's not within the zoning code, it does not require review, recommendation, or recommended approval by the Planning Commission. So, attached is the entire proposed ordinance language. This is written as a first read of this ordinance to give some ample time for everyone to review it and bring up any questions or last-minute adjustments that might feel, people might feel to be necessary. I would say that from my perspective, Planning Commission did a very good job with their, with the zoning code section in reviewing and making some, some very meaningful changes and updates to make it a little bit more reasonable and a little bit more enforceable. And then, of course, the Chapter 94 sections refer to the actual property maintenance and keeping standards that are going to be required as part of this new code.
Any questions about this ordinance? All right. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
We don't have any motions.
Oh, I'm sorry, this is a three-read. You are correct, so. I'm sorry.
No, just moving on.
So, we're moving on. So, this will count as our first read of that particular ordinance. The next ordinance is 2025-44, an ordinance adopting the Village of Glendale Historic Design Guidelines as amended in accordance with the Glendale Planning and Historic Preservation Commission Resolution 2025-02, recommending amendment to the Village of Glendale Historic Design Guidelines and declaring an emergency. This, too, was touched on last week, but David, would you please explain what's going on here?
Certainly, thank you, Mayor. This, this amendment began with the planning commission. They initiated the process of the amendment to the historic design guidelines regarding a portion, or a bullet on page forty-two, discussing the maximum permitted height of new construction in the historic district. The original language, as you can see in section one, the original language mentioned that the height of new construction shall not exceed one and a half stories at street level grade, following planning commission's review and deliberation through some public hearings. The revised language is in section two. Any new construction should not exceed two and a half stories in height. This is written as, again, as a three-read ordinance. I don't know that the changes are obviously sweeping as the chicken ordinance, so might be some consideration for making this maybe a two-reader instead, but that's up to council. For any other questions, that's status of this ordinance.
Do you have construction permits pending that, so if it's three reads, it's not gonna...
Right, if, if anything, it's just delaying making the changes. There's nothing that this would impact.
I'd like to ask a question about the language from shall not to should not. Is there a difference there?
Shall not is really more of a, shall I say, requirement versus should not being more of a recommendation.
Recommendation.
And I believe that's kind of where these changes came from in terms of where the historic preservation...
This is going to be in a guideline document, or it will be in the ordinance or the code?
There's two halves to the way that the historic design review is performed. There's two sets of, I'm not gonna use either the word guideline or requirements, but circumstances. The first is design requirements, and those are, I believe, five or six specific measurements, square footage, setbacks, those kinds of details that are very easy to measure, very objective numbers-based observations about an application. The second is the historic design guidelines, and those are guidelines. They are recommend, essentially recommendations or advice for the planning commission as they review applications. This language appears in the guidelines half.
Right.
So it is, at best, a strongly worded recommendation and not actual required...
Is there height control in the zoning?
There is, it is two and a half stories, so the amendment is proposed to match the zoning code.
All right.
It's two and a half stories for a house, but what about for a garage or a...
Accessory structures are one and a half.
One and a half, and that's defined?
In the zoning code, yeah.
Yep. Okay, so that's the first read of that ordinance. Finally, we come to resolution twenty-two-five dash twenty-five. A resolution of support for the Mill Creek Triangle Trail feasibility study. David, I'll let you also explain this one.
Okay. Everyone should have a copy of the Glendale-specific pages that were discussed at the streets and parks committees last week. But I will repeat what Ms. Baldridge said regarding the purpose of this resolution is not a, not a firm commitment by the village to complete any of the construction projects or trail projects that are outlined in this feasibility study. The purpose of this resolution is to voice conceptual support for the study as a whole, as well as support and recognition of the details and work completed around the project within the village. It does not commit the village to completing it in any given timeframe or any given amount. It just says that this work is, is representative of the village's, has the village's support as far as the attempt to put together a feasibility study for this trail project. Council at any point with this resolution, if you'll read section one, commits in concept to collaborate when village council may determine to be appropriate. So essentially, it's up to council when they wanted to begin and execute this project. But for now, it's saying that the village is satisfied with the efforts and work that was completed by the Tri-State Trails Group.
David, I do have one question.
Yes.
I'm, I'm just wondering why it's saying that we still support the study. In my mind, the study is done, and so at this point, it's more of a resolution of support of the project.
So the study is being prepared essentially as a leverage tool for grant and funding applications at the state and federal level for this project? Our support of the study is indicating that we agree that this is a viable document that summarizes the project well, and includes our portion of the project, potential portion of the project, and summarizes it well, so that all players have the ability to use this document for funding sources. As far as support for the actual projects itself, that's something that council would have to determine when they're ready to proceed. But this document gives us the ability, if, if council chooses, to pursue grant opportunities either on our own or in conjunction with other communities listed in the plan, and complete this work with federal or state grant assistance. So it is, it is, it is a resolution of support from the study. This is largely language that Tri-State Trails have, has provided to the village as part of what their anticipation is for the support of the study by all communities who participated in it.
So, just to clarify, this language, you said, was provided by Tri-State Trails?
Correct.
In conjunction with this study, or in conjunction with just general ideas about, you know, how did you come by this language, I guess?
Well, the, the language is, is provided by the Tri-State Trails organization and summarizes, you know, that the village has certain interests and priorities in maintaining, essentially looking at, at certain pieces of this, you know, active transport, and tr, active transportation infrastructure. There, you know, there are agreements with things like, these, these things are beneficial to public health, beneficial to community well-being, in addition to the fact that, you know, this, this project has been a long-term, a long-term collaborative project to create this larger network of trails. It's essentially recognizing all of the work that the Tri-State Trails Group has gone in conjunction with all of the communities involved. So, it's a multi-year process, so I don't think that anything in this language is particularly out of, out of, out of pocket, so to speak. But it, again, it does not commit us to completion of the project. We, we will, council will have the ability to decide when they wanna proceed with the work.
I kinda picked up on the same thing. So is this a verbatim?
There's some slight adjustments to it, but...
My, my concern is to ensure that we are not obligated to any one particular... We're not obligated to actually complete a bike trail, and we're not obligated to any specific option of bike trail. And it, I don't see that in here.
That's correct. That, that's intentionally written.
Okay.
To exclude a fir, a firm commitment to completing a certain portion, certain timeline, certain funding amount.
While we can say we're, we're in support of the study, I think it's up to our residents to decide, are we going to have a bike trail, and if so, where will it be? I wanna make sure we protect that.
And this study, this study specifically includes several route options.
Several options, yes.
And all of them, while there is, is prioritization information, all of these route options are remaining included in this study. So, all of those route options will be available in future funding applications based on what council decides at the time that it wants to proceed.
Okay, so, and if we're not obligated to any of these trails, then if we decide, six months from now, we found a better way, we can do that, too, if such so chews.
Yep.
Sharonville's already started building additional bike trail. It's not, it's different from this, but they're doing it on their own. They just decided they want to do it, okay. But as long as we're not committing ourselves to spend money or do something that the residents haven't weighed in on, I'm kind of okay with it. Does that make sense to you, too, Joan?
I think the language is really sweeping, and, and a little... And I, I go back to our meeting last Thursday, our streets committee meeting, and we were given this document, the, the study. And I didn't have time at the time of the meeting when we got the document to really go through it. I have had since then time to go through it. And there is more than one vision here in their study. It's not clear to me that the language in the resolution is, I guess, consistent with the actual study. So, I think that this resolution may be premature. We also talked about at our streets committee meeting, having a joint parks and streets committee meeting to talk, maybe to talk about this. I don't know if that'll ever happen, but that's, we did talk about that as well, to sort of hash out some of these other issues. When I went through this document, and I kinda made some notes for myself, I, I, I have a difficult time understanding what it is. I mean, yeah, they list priorities, but, you know, we haven't proposed or talked among ourselves about what our, you know, best option is. There's, those things may come in the future, but I think at this time, a resolution is probably premature. And if Tri-State Trails needs us to, do, do they need us to pass a resolution? I mean, I get the funding part of it, to get started on that. If some communities wanna do that, I don't get a sense that we're doing that here.
I think, we're not doing it yet, but I think the idea is that all the communities that the trail could pass through, because the goal is c, connect Sharon Woods with the other trails. I, I think the idea is that if all the communities are nodding their head, this makes sense, it's easier to get grants, is my understa, you have a better chance of getting grants if multiple communities are in agreement on connecting the different communities through a trail. And that's the purpose of the resolution, is it makes it official.
Joan, do you think we should table this for further discussion?
I, I do, I think that's a good idea, Nancy. I think tabling it would be a good idea, just so we can really hash out some better... Yeah, and I'm not saying this language is wrong, I just think it might be too broad.
Okay. So we, we would be able to bring it in October?
November.
November, yeah, before the end of the year, maybe?
Or we have a joint meeting first, between parks and streets.
Yeah. Do you agree with that?
I do, I... If you go down to the six whereas, and I'm not on, I'm on streets but not parks, so I went to both meetings last Thursday, does not create a financial obligation for the Village of Glendale. So I understand that, but then expresses support for advancing the study's vision. So what we talked about the other day was this could be a future council, four or five years down the road. So it almost sounds like we are committing to the vision, and the vision is three different paths right now.
Well, the vision, I would say, having been a part, being a part of the steering committee along with other communities, I don't know the exact count off the top of my head of the number of communities that were involved. The vision is, is, as these plans typically tend to be, they're long-winded, because they're, they're large documents that try to incorporate a lot of important details about projects. The vision is to create a system of regional trails to connect the, the existing trail systems and existing public park systems in Hamilton County. The, the group worked with all of the communities in the trail area, the areas that are requiring connection, the gaps to be bridged, I guess, to come up with route options that line up with that goal. For instance, for the village, it's, it's about connecting Glenwood Gardens to Sharonville's trail network, which they have done an extensive amount of work in developing their own network, both as part of, in preparation for this work, but also just on their own, with, with their own money and their own time and funding. Excuse me, so, there's a, there's a collaboration across the county of all the communities that are engaged in this project. I don't think any of them, and I don't think the Tri-State Trails Group in their, in all the time that we've been working on this, expects that we are falling into some kind of line as far as we're gonna absolutely unquestionably support every single piece of this document to a degree that's going to commit any future council to this. It's a conceptual feasibility study that says, we want the trail, for the village, anyway, we want the trail to connect Glenwood Gardens to Sharonville. Here are, and run through Glendale, here are a couple of ways that we can do that. Now, as I said, all the routes are still going to be included in the upcoming, with the final version of the, the plan. The, the, the idea is to say, we, the village, are supportive of the concept of, of trail facilities, recreation facilities generally. If we decide, as council decides that they wanna proceed with the construction of them, then they can, and that is, of course, a funding exercise. I don't know the consequences of not participating, except to say that not having the support of the study, we're not, we wouldn't be able to benefit from it if we do decide to proceed with the construction. Because we've, we are, we are saying we don't agree with the, the large-scale perspective of what's been prepared.
I don't, I don't think we're saying we don't agree. I think we're, we're just not endorsing. We're not, we're not coming with a resolution that says...
Instead of voting on a resolution, we're just staying in the, in the weeds for now.
The, the, the issue, and I understand the, the difference there. The, unfortunately, the issue is, is that failure to endorse, frankly, is, is essentially opposition in saying, you're not agreeing with the proposal. You can't remain silent on it.
Not agreeing with the study.
Well, you're not agreeing with the study. Yeah, that's a better word, you're not agreeing with the study. So, why didn't you agree with the study? And if there, if the answer is, you know, and, and, not to use your phrase, Joan, but if the answer is, you know, the language is too sweeping, well, then, you know, there's really not much to be said that we would be able to benefit from.
Well, and you're stating the language in the resolution, so, is too sweeping, right?
I think it's pretty broad.
Pretty broad.
Yeah, and I also think, and then just to, to follow up quickly, you know, it doesn't commit council to do anything, but I don't wanna mislead anyone, you know, thinking it, like, it can be future councils will be, they'll have their hands tied, because residents will say, well, no, this other council just, you know, approved this resolution, and they're, so I think that that could be, you know, like, a misunderstanding or misleading.
Okay.
I think, but let's have a joint parks and streets, 'cause everyone except for Nancy is on those two committees, so we can hammer out some language.
So we have a joint meeting.
I, I think, you know, we're other, 'cause to kinda support what David's saying, you're other saying, we're interested, or we're not?
Yeah.
So how do you, so if council was interested, how do you write that up?
Yep.
Well, I think we can work for this.
Or if you're not, then you go, you're not.
Yeah, I mean, we, we had a meeting last Thursday, you know.
All right, okay.
Yeah, I'd happy to do that, let's have a joint committee. I, I, I sort of wonder if it's too sweeping, are we saying we wanna get more specific in the resolution? Because that seems like the opposite direction of what the concern is.
I think there's, I think there's a level of discomfort with the resolution the way it is now, and some people don't completely understand the study that's been put forward because there hasn't been enough time to review. So I guess if there's a, it, it sounds like on the part of some people, there's a desire to table this for now and bring it back to another meeting after we've had a joint meeting.
Yeah, I, I don't think we're harmed by waiting, I mean, I'm not saying wait a year, that's, I, you know, I defer to everyone else about how, how long they wanna wait, but I can't, I don't think right now, it, I could say I would be a yes to this.
Okay. It sounds like there's, and it sounds like some other people haven't been, haven't had time to make up their minds, and it sounds like there's a desire to have a joint meeting, which can happen at any time within the next couple of weeks. So, anyway, you, you, I'm referee now, you guys decide what you, we're gonna do, Jeff.
I move, I move we table this resolution for further discussion, perhaps with, with two joint committees. Or with joint committee meetings.
I second that.
Okay.
Okay. All in favor of tabling, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
I'm opposed.
But the majority says they'd like to table, so that's what we will do. And we'll bring it to a joint meeting.
Sure, and may I quickly just ask...
Absolutely, yeah.
If, it would be excellent if everybody could just spend some time doing reading and research about shared-use trails in general. Sort of how they're used, effect on communities.
Do you have a website you could make?
Tri-State Trails is a good one.
I will circulate the full report.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
It's about a hundred and fifty pages, so have fun.
Thank you.
But. Okay. Can you please highlight though, where some resource material might be with, with comments? The plan is pretty full of sort, of sources and citations. Okay, good.
And Google's full of good information too. But I think there's a lot of misunderstanding about these types of trails that I've heard over the last couple of years with working with this group, so I think it would be great if we just come with eyes wide open and having already sorted some of those out before we get into our meeting. It would be great.
That sounds fine. And you happen to be chair of both committees, so we'll leave it in your hands to schedule.
Okay.
Alright, thank you. Alright, that brings us to the close of the new business. Financial reports were circulated. Is there acknowledgement of receipt of those reports?
Yes.
Yes, there is, okay. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, unless there's other business.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, everyone.